Welcome. This is Mayor Stephen B. Grant of the City of Boynton Beach and welcome to the City Commission meeting today, Tuesday, February 16, 2021, at 5:32 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Present.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Present.
Commissioner Katz?
Here.
Commissioner Haig?
Yeah.
Commissioner Romulus?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And Yuri, would you mind providing us with the introduction?
Hello and welcome. My name is Yuri Konikov, and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can participate by using the go-to webinar interface. The first way is by typing your question into the questions section at the bottom of the interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. The second way is by clicking on the raise hand icon indicating that you wish to speak. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker at the appropriate time and unmute your audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Speakers should minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into their device during their allotted time. I will now control, I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Yuri. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Pastor Bender of Christ Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Christina Romulus?
Heavenly Father, we thank you. It is with hearts of gratitude that we reflect right now on how blessed we are, blessed to be in a city with the vision and the transformation that we are seeing, evidenced easily by just looking at the buildings and structures that you are allowing to be able to come forth. But God, we pray your anointing and your favor and your blessing of wisdom and discernment on all of the leaders. I pray that you would continue to help us to honor you in the way that we treat one another as a community that Boynton Beach would be known by its love for one another, by kindness, and that you would continue to transform all things that we do so that we can be able to be a place where families are growing strong and healthy and a community is vibrantly expressing the love that you have for us. Thank you, God. May your blessing be on us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Moving forward with agenda approval, additions, deletions, or corrections, I have a request from City Manager that Joe DiMaggio's would like to follow up their presentation at our next City Commission meeting.
Mayor?
Yes?
And with the consent of the commission, I'd like to add a future agenda item, and I'll speak to staff and Lori if it's, there's consensus, but I'd like either at the next City Commission meeting or the second meeting in March, some sort of presentation or report on the current staffing levels in the Boynton Beach Police Department. The reason I bring this up is that I know a couple, a couple weeks, maybe a month or two back, there was, you know, a news report that touted our bonus incentive program for trying to recruit new police officers to the city. And I know during the last election cycle, even though it wasn't election cycle I participated in, there was, it was a hot topic of discussion on the campaign trail for candidates about making sure that our, our police were fully staffed up and service was at, at the top level. So I'm kind of just looking for an update on the bonus initiative, whether that's led to an increase in hires, and also just for my own edification and anybody else who's interested, just maybe like a five-year view of numbers relative to hiring, attrition, vacancies, just so we have a better idea and see if there's any additional recommendations that, that might be necessary if the, the vacancies have persisted for a number of years in spite of efforts to try to increase hiring.
I have no objection.
No objection.
No objection.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Thank you. I would add as an item, a future agenda item, I've sent this information to the city manager, so the information would be shared at a later time, but the, I have received a request from the US Conference of Mayors to, to bring forth a proclamation against antisemitism as there has been a increase in, in violence against the Jewish community. And so this is something I'd like to bring forward for discussion and possible approval in the, in our, one of our upcoming agendas.
A proclamation or a resolution?
Mayor, I believe it is...
I'm pretty sure it was a proclamation.
I believe it's a proclamation. Yes, thank you.
I'll be happy to sign the proclamation, or if you'd like to do the proclamation, you're more than welcome to.
Mayor, shall we put that on the next meeting then, instead of a future agenda item, perhaps put that on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I add one thing under City Manager's report to make a brief announcement?
Yes. What is the?
Regarding the appointment of an interim Assistant City Manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. All right, I have a first and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Um, I don't believe I have anything to disclose at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Haig?
I would like to, no real disclosures, but I did attend the Boca Chamber Pulse event. They gave a COVID-19 update today, which was quite interesting. Other than that, no other disclosures.
All right. And Commissioner Romulus, do you have any disclosures?
Mayor, I have no disclosures. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have no disclosures as well.
For myself, on February 4th, I attended the MLK recap, and very excited to see that our MLK Committee is going strong all year round and providing, providing our community with different ways to support the, the mission and life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. One of those is that our Sister Cities is having a young artist and author contest where anyone going through the, the Boynton Beach Sister Cities can apply for six different categories, including artwork, poems, essays, and in addition, they included new musical and, and, and revised music. On February 5th, I attended the Pollination Exhibit at our new Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center. I'd like to thank Nicole Galucci for painting some wonderful paintings. On the 6th, I attended the Sky Hounds over at Ezel Hester Center. And I spoke with one of our residents about homeownership in our downtown. And, you know, he stated that it would be wonderful if the, the town square project would have, you know, instead of being rentals, could be condominiums. And so I want to put it on the record that I'm in favor of doing whatever I can to see that the residential units in our town square project would be condominiums that allow for home ownership versus rentals. In addition, on the 9th, I attended the Florida League of Cities Conference, where we heard from the former Department of Emergency Management Services Director Jared Moskowitz. And, you know, it's kind of the bottleneck regarding the vaccines. We still got to be patient. I'd like to thank everyone that is being patient. And I think we're, I'm working with a couple of the nonprofits to help provide internet and internet access electronics so that people who don't, who can't put their appointment online have that ability. And so, next on the 12th is the Chinese Lunar New Year. Welcome the year of the ox. On the 13th, I attended the Magic Wheels and Special Deals Event over our Barrier Free Park. There is still time to join the, the virtual 5K. On the 14th, wishing everyone a wonderful Valentine's Day. On the 15th, it was, I had a press, a news piece with WPTV regarding our CVBG funding. And also, I took the, the Wieland Foundation Water Challenge. And so hopefully, staff can bring that back, that with more information so we can have our community get more involved. And then, right before our meeting, I attended the Boynton Beach Community High School SAC meeting.
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I would like to announce that on this coming Thursday, our marketing department is doing a video, and I will be narrating our own three local heroes here in Boynton Beach, which we have buildings that are named after them. And that would be Ezel Hester, Carolyn Sims, and John Denson. I just was honored to have the pleasure of knowing all three of them personally. So I will be doing a video that you all will be able to see at a later time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Haig. I'm very much looking forward to that. And speaking of which, and regarding the history, you know, we have a park called Heritage Park. And I don't know whether it's up to us as the City Commission or the community, but I believe that it's been decades since someone's added their names to it, and there are spots available for people to add their names. For myself, you know, I would nominate former Commissioner Mac McCray for his service to our community as well. So I don't know how that would, yes?
Now, if I just might be able to add to that Heritage Park, I, I don't always like to brag, but it, it was my sister who originally brought that to the city of Boynton Beach, about the heritage, the heritage parade and all that. So her name was Lillian Otis. If you would, that's in the history book. She was a city commissioner. So we, we would want to make that a consideration also.
Absolutely. So hopefully, I will put, is that something the, the commission would like to discuss on future agenda?
Yes.
All right. So we'll put that, before we end the meeting, we'll put a motion to put that on. All right. Is there anything else before we move on? Not hearing, our first announcement is proclaim the week of 21, 2021 as Eating Disorders Week, and the weekend of February 26, 2021 to February 28, 2021 is not one more weekend. City Boynton Beach Proclamation, whereas eating disorders affect 30 million individuals in the United States during their lifetimes, with more than 600,000 individuals in the state of Florida alone. And whereas eating disorders, including the specific disorders of anorexia nervosa, bulimia nervosa, binge eating disorder, avoidant restrictive food intake disorder, and other specified feeding or eating disorders are complex biological-based illnesses. And whereas eating disorders are associated with serious physical health consequences, including irregular heartbeats, heart disease, and heart failure, kidney failure, osteoporosis, gastric rupture, tooth decay, obesity, gallbladder disease, diabetes, and death. And whereas at least once every 62 minutes, someone dies due to the struggle with an eating disorder. And anorexia nervosa has the highest mortality rate of any mental illness. And eating disorders know no boundaries, no boundaries with respect to genders, ages, races, ethnicities, body shapes and weights, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic statuses. And whereas eating disorders have a high prevalence among active military service members and veterans. And whereas with early detection and intervention, fully recovery from an eating disorder is possible. And now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of February 21st, February 27th as 2000, of 2021 as Eating Disorders Awareness Week. And Tammy, do we have someone online or that would like to accept the proclamation?
No, we do not, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Our next proclamation is for February 21st, 2021 as International Mother Language Day. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation, whereas a mother language is vital to every individual's sense of identity and development, and whereas language is the cornerstone of culture and is the means of communication among people. And whereas languages and multilingualism can advance inclusion and sustainable development goals focused on leaving no one behind. And whereas every two weeks, language disappears with society losing an entire cultural and intellectual heritage. At least 43% of the estimated 6,000 languages spoken in the world are endangered. Only a few hundred languages have generally been placed, given a place in our education system and the public domain, and less than 100 are used in the digital world. Whereas International Mother Language Day was proclaimed by the General Conference of the United Nations Education Scientific and Cultural Organization in November 1999. And whereas on 16th May, 2007, the United Nations General Assembly in its resolution called upon member states to promote the preservation and protection of all languages used by peoples of the world. Multilingual and multicultural societies exist through their languages, which transmit and preserve traditional knowledge and cultures in a sustainable way. And whereas today, there is a growing awareness that languages play a vital role in development in ensuring cultural diversity and intercultural dialogue, but also in strengthening cooperation and attaining quality education for all in building inclusive knowledge societies and preserving cultural heritage, and immobilizing political will for applying the benefits of science and technology to sustainable development. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority best to me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim February 21st, 2021 as International Mother Language Day. And I believe we do have someone here to accept the proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners. How are you guys today? So the International Mother Language Day, we appreciate Boynton Beach being the first city in the, in Florida, actually, to recognize the International Mother Language Day that has been recognized by UNESCO and UN as a day of celebration for freedom. It starts with our mother tongue and how we speak. Freedom of speech generates from International Mother Language Day as the right to speak your own language. So with that being said, as you guys know, this Sunday, February 21st, we'll be celebrating it in behalf of ABPAC and the City of Boynton Beach at the Sarah Sims Park. I welcome all of you guys and your family to come and tend, see the culture, and celebrate unity and diversity in the City of Boynton Beach. And the best part is, there'll be free lunch. So I welcome you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last announcement is by Casey Young, Recreation Parks Department Director, regarding the Oceanfront Park Special Event at Oceanfront Park on Saturday, February 20th to the 20, February 20th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to noon.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here to announce the Oceanfront Park Special Event this Saturday, February 20th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Oceanfront Park. This is the final event of the four scheduled in this series. February is the last month until November that we're able to host this event due to turtle nesting season. All well-behaved dogs and owners can join the Recreation and Parks Department for a paw tea on the beach. Dogs must be properly licensed and will be allowed off-leash in a designated area on the south end of the beach. Free parking will be available during the event until 12:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you again for the wonderful events that you've had this winter season. And hopefully, we can plan out more events at our Joseph Crowder Dog Park. Seeing no further announcements, we will now move to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Hello, Iman Kareem, 214 Northeast Third Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I am coming here in behalf of the CEO, founder of ABPAC. We just received the proclamation for the International Mother's Language Day. I just wanted to ask if we could put it on the future agenda. We're working hard with the MLK community to see if we could propose a statue of Martin Luther King along with a short menor at the Sarah Sims Park. We'll have architectural drawings and so forth. This is, will be funded by the community, not by the city. So individuals will be able to do this and stand for what Martin Luther King stood for, which is diversity and equality, and what the short menor stands for, for International Mother Language Day. Everybody have the right to speak. So I'm requesting in the future meeting if we could propose this.
I would suggest that once you get all the information, you provide us a letter of intent, because otherwise, we don't necessarily know what we're talking about.
Sure. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just apologies for interrupting, but a question for staff. Don't we still have a future agenda item to have a discussion about the potential for monuments at parks that, that is still a ways away from being brought back to us?
Yes, sir. That's something Jim and I are working on. It is not a simple thing. So when we initially had brought it up, we had indicated it, we, we really needed some time, probably, you know, three to six months to get, to pull something together. But we are working on it actively now.
So the, yes, Commissioner Katz, the, the anticipated timeline is April 2021.
Thank you.
And if there is no one else from the, the audience here, I will go check online. Do we have anyone with their, their hand raised, Yuri?
I do not see any hands raised at this time, Mayor.
All right. Going once, going twice. All right. Public audience is now closed. Moving on to administrative. Point eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. Our first position, we have one, we have one alternate available for the Art Advisory Board with no one applying. We have two regular and two alternates on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We have one position from, for Commissioner Romulus for the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. Commissioner Romulus, do you have a nomination?
Chair, I'm sorry, I just had a lot of background noise behind me. I, I apologize. I did not have a chance to review the applicants. I, I, I'm okay with either deferring my appointment or waiting until next meeting and tabling this.
So would you put a motion out to table to the next meeting?
Motion to table.
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have two positions available on the Employee Pension Board. We have one alternate and one regular on the Historic Resources Preservation Board. And we have four applicants for the Planning and Development Board. I had a chance to review the resumes, and I know a few of the applicants. And I'd like to nominate Thomas Remicchio because of his experience in the community here, and, and the, the fact that he has stated that he has the time available to, as a retired professional, to really make sure that what he is doing is correct.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Our next thing for administrative, it says appoint eligible members of the Library Advisory Board to serve as the Board Chair and Vice Chair. I believe the Advisory Board recommendations is to have Marshall Levine as the Board Chair and Dr. Stephanie Hayden Adiemo as the Vice Chair. May I have that motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next, appoint eligible members of the Art Advisory Board to serve as Board Chair and Vice Chair. The, the board voted to recommend Courtland McGuire for Board Chair and Marshall Levine for Vice Chair. May I have that motion?
Go move.
Second.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any of the items on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Did I get a second?
Second, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. Would someone like to pull any of these items? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
To approve, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Katz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. One of the things that I, I saw that we've, you know, with all these engineering firms that the, the city has worked with over the past five years, you know, we're talking hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. I was wondering if we can get kind of like an overview from these engineering firms, what they've done for us, just so that we can, you know, basically know what, where are basically know what where our money has gone over the past five years. And so I don't know if the rest of the commission is interested in hearing from the different engineering firms, because we have the awarded them the RFQ and have an extended contract with them. But it's kind of like, I'd like to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you mean like a staff summary of the different firms and what what projects they've worked on? Or do you mean actual presentations from the firms?
Well, you know, it's almost in the sense of that if those firms, if it's part of their RFQ to give us updates, then ask them for the updates. If not, have our staff just provide us kind of a, in the spreadsheet form. What's, you know, what have we accomplished?
Mayor, I support this.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll pull that together for you. Sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead, Lori.
No, I was gonna say, we'd be happy to pull that together. I don't know that we typically ask other than, you know, contract management updates to staff once the RFPs are awarded. So we can certainly go back the last five years and outline both our small task order contracts as well as our large ones, just to to give you a good synopsis. We'd be happy to do that.
Right.
They take me maybe March sixteen, if that's okay. Give us a little time.
Yeah, it probably could be an even April. You know, it's just CDM Smith, Calvin Gerardo and Associates, Corolla Engineers.
They do a lot of work.
Correct. And so it's, it's at the point is that we normally see the beginning of it and awarding of the funds, but we don't see the the end of it. And so that's kind of what I'm requesting. All right. And moving forward to the city manager's report. Consider modification to the city's CDBG Small Business Grant Program Eligibility Criteria to Include Businesses Within the CRA. Before we begin, my first question is, did we receive additional funding?
No, sir. We are still working off the one, I believe, the one, the first allocation of a couple, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from through the CARES Act for CDBG. And not, no additional funding to date. And David has a couple of slides, I think, and is prepared to speak to a little more detail.
Yeah, my, my big question is, is that are we allowed to spend this other than just small businesses?
I'm going to ask David and/or LaShay to weigh in on that one.
Mayor David Scott, Department of Economic Development for the City of Boynton Beach. I would, as Lori just mentioned, I would defer that to LaShay. She is the expert and she has been working closely with the and the federal government on the dispersment of funds. So she should be on as well.
And she is available. She would have to be unmuted, but she's on, available to speak.
LaShay is currently self muted.
LaShay, you'd have to unmute your microphone to speak. So David, why don't you begin with your presentation? Hopefully, Ms. Brooks will be able to speak soon.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, the commission asked for an update on the Boynton Beach Community Block Grant Small Business Grant. We went back and we took a look at our process and wanted to report out and give a full comprehensive report to the commission and to the public. We've been working very hard. John Dergan is also on as well to support this conversation and this presentation. We, we opened the grant up last year on June twenty-sixth. And we had an overwhelming response at that time, as you know, Mayor and Vice Mayor Commission. There, we were in the middle of COVID and we still are in the middle of that pandemic. And there's a lot of need out there. And we're still finding that a lot of our businesses are struggling. And we are certainly trying to find every opportunity to to supply and meet that need. At the time this CARES Act money was identified, the CRA had dispersed a million dollars in small business grants. And the city had utilized and expended its sixty thousand dollars in in funding that we had identified and made available to our small businesses. So this money was brought forward, this pocket of money, or this money that is identified, was brought forward to the commission. There was about three hundred thousand dollars available. And the commission directed staff to use a portion of that towards supporting facilities, cleaning facilities. And so that money went towards cleaning facilities. There was a remaining balance available, which then went towards the administration and grant awards. So just as an overview, after, after the commission's direction, there was two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars available to our small businesses. We broke that up into maximum awards of ten thousand dollars. And we call it maximum. It depends on what the need is and and supporting justification. So that money can go to salaries and payroll, commercial mortgage or rent reimbursement, utility payments, expenses, expenditures due to COVID, and any inventory that the businesses purchased to support the their cleaning efforts. And these were all in accordance with the CDBG guidelines. So as I mentioned, we opened the grant up on June twenty-sixth. We received fifty-one grants. The number of applicants who, because of certain restrictions, one, we did not allow or did not open the grant criteria up to businesses within the CRA because of the reason that I mentioned earlier, that the CRA had just dispersed a million dollars in grants. The other criteria that would disqualify any applicant was that they received other CARES Act money. And because this is CARES Act, we were careful not to cross those sources. So after those applicants were disqualified, we were left with a total of twenty-five in in process that we are reviewing and continue to review. Seven of those have made it through the first step. That means they provided all the necessary documentation. They met the criteria and they are now with LaShay to complete the final review and disperse the grant money. That would be, in that next slide, I'll have a, be able to share some of those totals. So that leaves eighteen still in queue that we continue to review. And we didn't want to reject any businesses outright. Because we, again, we know the need. So if a business didn't have certain documentation, didn't have bank statements, we certainly worked with them to help rectify that. So John has been working very hard to do that. And he's working hand in hand with LaShay to make sure all the documentation is correct before we submit to HUD. And then we also brought on Annette Gray. Annette Gray has been supporting us and helping some of those businesses pull that information together. So we brought her into the process as well. So again, we didn't want to just eliminate any businesses outright and try to help them get qualified. So with that, we certainly did, again, we certainly did restrict our CDBG grant money to those outside of the CRA. With the number of businesses that we have in process now, this table shows that if we were to award the maximum of ten thousand to all of the businesses that are in process, we'd be short by nineteen thousand dollars. But what this shows is that these are maximum grants. So we certainly do anticipate that many of them will not ask for the entire ten or may only be asking for a certain amount of money that will fall shorter than ten. So going forward, one of the requests, well, the request of the commission was to consider opening up the process to businesses out within the CRA as well as outside of the CRA. So we provided some suggestive guidance for the for the commission at this time. Because we do have these twenty-five in process and because the money is fairly committed at this point, we would recommend that we continue to process the seven and the eighteen. And then if there's any money left over, that we then consider opening this up to for to businesses within the CRA, if that's the commission's direction. And then going forward, as we, as we receive, or should we receive additional CARES Act money, opening up future awards and grant opportunities to businesses in both the CRA and outside the CRA. So we, we want to present this to the commission, respond to your request to open this up, or consider opening this up to businesses within the CRA. But understanding that our funds are very limited at this time. And should any opportunities avail themselves, that we would be able to consider a citywide grant award program. With that, again, I'm sorry.
No, David, I was just going to, just so the commission understands, our, our process, thinking process initially was due to the large sum of money the CRA was able to award in grants initially. And the city had very, very limited, only the sixty-one thousand that with this two hundred thousand from the CDBG would we eliminated the CRA because they had access to over, to almost a million dollars prior, that this would have provide other businesses in the community access to some funding. And that's, that's initially why the decision was made administratively as it was.
Absolutely. So that, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commission, I conclude my presentation. And John Dergan is available. And LaShay, should she unmute, LaShay Brooks is also available.
Thank you, David, for the the presentation. And so currently, if all applicants under review receive the amount, we will the city will be in the hole. So it's not necessarily for this round of CDBG funding, but any additional CDBG funding to allow outside of the Boynton Beach CRA district.
Let me add that it's a, because the award is set up as a first qualified, first award, we were certainly cut off the award at the two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Great. So
we wouldn't be in the hole.
So the the twenty-fourth, or the, I guess, the seventeenth applicant under review would may get a thousand and the eighteenth might not get any. If everybody, everybody maxes out before.
Yes, if everyone were to get maximum.
So thank you for that information. So at this time, I, and I forgot to ask, David, do we require these applicants to see if they've already taken out a PPP loan?
That is part of the application process. Yes.
Okay, because I know that, I don't know if the, the second PPP loan is available yet. But I know there is in talks to have those as well. You know, for myself personally, I think we need to start focusing a little bit more on our current residents. Because they're the ones that live within the city limits. And I, I think any other CDBG funding that we have may go paying off mortgages that are overdue, rent payments, or utility payments of our residents versus any businesses. But I'll hear from the the commission now.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have any particular view on necessarily expanding the uses of the funds. Per what you just said, you know, I'm open to any sort of discussion like that. But I would, I'd request the commission not to expand the the eligibility to the CRA businesses or residents because of the reasons mentioned by staff that over a million dollars in economic grants were supplied in the past year by the CRA to exclusively CRA businesses. Nobody outside of the CRA was eligible for that. And the, the remainder of the city, seventy-five, eighty percent of the city, and their businesses only had access to to sixty thousand dollars. That was like six businesses for eighty percent of the city. And, and once I saw the numbers presented by staff and reading the backup earlier this week, it kind of became clear, well, two things became clear. One, that not enough businesses outside of the CRA are aware of the CDBG grants, because I, I can't understand that other than them not being aware, there should be a hundred or two hundred or three hundred applications for, for essentially free money. But tho- those in the CRA, we could, you know, as, as a CRA board, we could always increase the annual allocation of funds for any sort of economic stimulus for these businesses. And, you know, we had a a discussion item that we voted on for reallocating four hundred thousand dollars or so last, last week at the CRA. Every year, there's, there's some pile of money that gets unspent. And if, if we chose to as a CRA board and we wanted to enhance or make on an annual basis more monies available in the CRA, we could do that. But the city, for, for us to try to make hundreds of thousands of dollars more available for the, the non-CRA businesses or residents, it would, it would be a stretch for the city budget. We'd have to make some tough decisions. So I'd, I'd urge that we keep, we keep the current construct in place. And maybe as a CRA board, have a discussion in the future about creating a, an annual line item to try to do more for maybe distressed businesses within the CRA that might need a lifeline if they're trying to survive. So those are kind of my views at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, to, Mayor. To your point about residents and the use of the CBDG funds for residents who may need support with their homes. Is there anyone that can give us some numbers of how many applicants, I guess, may be outstanding or that are waiting on some of these funds to assist with that?
LaShay is available, Mayor. I think she may be able to. I think we got her microphone working.
Brooks. Yep, she got her hand raised. Ms. Brooks, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Hi, LaShay Brooks, Community Improvement Program Manager. What's the question regarding the coronavirus relief fund? Is that the question? Or was it?
I'm not necessarily specifying it's anything. I'm just asking in regards to what the mayor said. Are there outstanding applicants from residents looking for funding relief or assistance with the use of the CBDG funds?
Okay, currently with the coronavirus relief fund, that's the fund that the CBDG dollars were sent to the state. The state awarded those dollars to the cities and counties. That program closed on, at the end of December. We assisted, we had eighty-eight applications. We assisted fifty-two applicants. And then we had the remaining thirty-three that we could not assist for whatever reason, they were denied, either because they were not impacted by COVID. They received funds from a different source. So that, that, that program has closed out. So we closed that program out. The coronavirus CARES Act, they were using for the small.
Is it just me or did she cut out?
Cut out. No, she just cut out.
I'm gonna unmute Adam, because I think she's with Adam, perhaps. Adam, is LaShay with you?
Yes, good evening. One second.
They're in the office.
I'm sorry. My phone died out. I apologize.
Yes, it's okay. These things do happen.
Did you need me to repeat any of that information?
So you
The second cycle.
Talking about the, the second funding package after the, the Talking about the, the second funding package after the, the CARES that ended in December.
Yes, the CRF funds. 88 applications. So we received 88 applications. We assisted 52 of the 88. And then the remaining 33 were not eligible for assistance.
Right. And then there was a second part to what you were saying. That's where you cut off.
I went back to the small business grant. I wasn't sure if you need any more information on that.
Yes, go ahead.
Reiterate, reiterate the small business program.
Okay.
We missed.
We received 51 applications. Out of the 51, 21 received funding from another source. The reason why, another reason why we, it's not a, actually difficulty, but if they receive any CARES Act funds from other sources, we cannot assist them. HUD has a rule on duplication of services. So we had a lot of applicants that fell out because we realized they received funds from Palm Beach County in the tune of almost 25,000, because the county gave more funding. So those applications, out of those, that 51, 21 received funds from another source. Five were in the CRA district. Seven are, right now, we're reviewing that we have decided that they are eligible to receive funds and we're trying to get them funded. Eighteen are still in the queue. So we still collecting documents. John is very good about that. He's collecting the documents and we're trying to get those applicants completed and through the process.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to continue from what she just said.
Yes.
So you said of the seven applicants that are currently going through the process, what would be the maximum that they could receive if, if everything works out?
10,000.
And what is the full remainder or full balance of what we have?
Currently, right now, the remained imbalance that we have to disperse is roughly about 231,000. 231,452, actually.
So even if all these seven got awarded, we still have about 100 something odd thousand left. And then you're saying there are 18 in the queue. Those 18 that are in the queue, they're just, we're just waiting on documentation. What, what's going on with those 18?
Those are, yes. They are in the queue. We have determined that they are eligible, but we're just missing documents.
Okay. So I mean, all that being said, the clarity, clarity that I get here is that there are still businesses going through this process that at the end of the day, these funds could ultimately be fully dispersed. That's what I'm hearing, unless I'm misunderstanding.
Yes.
So does that make this conversation moot then?
A little bit.
Yeah.
So you'll, so LaChee, you'll let us know if there's extra funding?
Yes, what we determined that we decided that if we see that anything happens with those 18, we can always open it back up to applicants and open it back up to the public and they can reapply. You know, we can get other applicants to apply.
Wonderful. And then, LaChee, my request to give the, the money to residents who may be in need for utility payments or mortgage or rental payments, is that a possibility under the?
Not under these funds, no. The only way we can do that is we do have small amount of ship dollars that we can possibly help, that we did, you know, when, and we did modify our LHA to include for disaster, a nap, you know, instead of natural disasters, this pandemic. So we just did some wording with the state to change that. So yes, we can look at that.
Wonderful. And so
It's not very much money.
You know, it
It's only about $88,000.
To some people, that, that may be a lot of money.
Right.
So thank you, and I look forward to, for you coming back with that, us, in regards to those ship funding.
Okay.
Now, mayor, may I, for clarification on, so we're still on the discussion, if there are any funds left out of the 231,000. Policy decision is still in, up in the air as to whether or not you want us, if we had money to go back and open it up, like LaChee said, are we going to include CRA businesses or not?
I believe at this time, we had a, one vote to, to not open it up and
I would not be in favor of opening up.
I would not.
And so, as you just heard, we, we kind of have consensus to not open it up. And so the, the question then being is that, do we need to have a motion to vote to deny opening it up? Or can this die for lack of emotion?
Status quo.
It can die for lack of emotion.
All right. So if no one would like to, to make a motion on item 9A, going once, going twice, the modifications have not been approved. Moving forward to 9B, appoint interim city manager. Lori?
Mayor, thank you for, as you know, Colin Groff has mutually separated employment from the city effective last Monday. And I would like to, I wanted to advise and have you confirm the appointment of Andrew Mack as an interim assistant city manager for the time being.
I don't think we need approval, or do we?
Yeah, is this a motion? Do you need a motion for this?
You do need a
I would, yes, thank you.
One of our charter duties, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it, oh, city managers as well?
Assistant.
Assistant city managers require both the approval at time of hire or appointment and also for removal by the city commissioner.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to just add that I'm very excited to continue working with Andrew and look forward to seeing the, the great job that he does and hopefully remove that interim title very soon.
And Andrew just remain being the person that you are.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to legal, propose ordinance 21 dash 003. Jim?
Thank you, mayor. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter nine, fire protection and prevention, article one general, section nine three, examination of building permits to include photovoltaic systems, providing for repeal of laws in conflict, severability codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? Hearing none from the commission. Is there any discussion from the public? Please raise your hand if you're like to. Saying none. Public audience is now closed. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Hi.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzera?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
The vote is five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And just a note of thanks to Kathy Klein, the fire marshal, who keeps a eye on the little nuanced changes to the Florida Fire Prevention Code and brings them a forward for amendment of the code. Ordinance 21 004, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter 26, water sewer and city utilities, creating article 10 entitled Year-Round Landscape Irrigation Conservation Measures, Variances, Enforcement, Penalties, Providing For Intent And Purpose Definitions Application Year-Round Permanent Landscape Irrigation Measures, Additional Measures, Variance Relief, Enforcement And Penalties, Providing For Conflict Severability Codification And An Effective Date.
Is there a presentation?
Good afternoon, Mayor Grant. This is Joe Pater. And I don't have a presentation, but I'm able to describe what this ordinance is about. The South Florida Water Management District requested that municipalities implement this year-round ordinance. They suggested that future funding requests will be considered, whether the city has this ordinance in place. This ordinance limits irrigation to two days per week in the early morning or, or late evening. Playing fields, athletic fields, golf courses are exempt from this restriction. The ordinance includes requirements for large irrigation users to connect the city's reclaimed water system if it is available. It also provides for enforcement variance process.
So Joe, does, I see that the exceptions are reclaimed water. Does that include canal water?
No, it, it's saltwater. If it's a saltwater canal, it does include saltwater canals and reclaimed water. So you don't have to
Okay. So, you know, the, the question that I have is that we are saying that it's not only potable water, but also freshwater from canals?
That's correct.
And why do we want to include the canal water?
It exempts irrigation. Freshwater irrigation is the exempt, is the, the ordinance. They're trying to eliminate the use of freshwater. And, and the freshwater in the canals actually recharges groundwater supplies.
Okay. And so what is the, the limitation then, I guess, for newly installed landscape?
There is an exception for watering in new landscape there.
Okay. And how, what is that exception?
I pull up the ordinance. I can't remember it by heart, sorry. Let's see, landscape irrigation, watering in, fertilizing, insecticide, pesticides, these are all allowed. Plant material may be watered using low-volume irrigation, microirrigation, low-volume head watering, hand-watering methods, rain barrels, cisterns, and other similar rain harvest devices, without regard to listed watering.
Mayor, let me just add, there's a definition of new landscaping that limits it for a period of 90 days so that the new landscaping can be established. The balance of the ordinance is intended to reflect the costs associated with putting in new landscaping and the interest in making sure that we're not dealing with, and we don't have an attractive nuisance in the end, essentially, which is dead landscaping. So this gives, this 90-day exemption gives it an opportunity to get root. And the, once the exemption expires, it's subject to the same watering restrictions as all other irrigate, all other landscaping.
And so are we going to start allowing residents to use reclaimed water?
I don't think we're going to be doing that, mayor. We're limiting the reclaim to large users at this point.
Okay.
Which we'd expend, I think, mayor, we, Joe, haven't we expanded our reclaim to a large condominium, like High Point and some of the residential, but master metered?
That's correct. We do have some irrigation meters out there, yes. That's correct. But those are larger users, not necessarily individual lots.
Right.
And this is, and if we don't get this done, or what other municipalities have enacted this ordinance?
I don't have that information. I get that for you, mayor.
Okay.
We can get that for you before the second reading, mayor. And, and I think the Water Management District is pushing hard on cities that haven't done it yet. And I know, as Joe mentioned earlier, I don't know if it's an official policy as of yet, but we've been informed. You know, they're, they would like to encourage us to do this, obviously for conservation purposes and may take that into consideration when, when we apply potentially for grant funding from the district as to whether or not this ordinance is you know, in, in place or not. But I know several cities have, we can get you a list. I just don't have it in front of us.
And the only change that I would like to make is three days a week, or actually four days? You know, with the, the drought that we had recently. You know, are you saying that we have to use, you know, only using it two days a week? You know, we may be having to have it on for a very extended period of time. And so I don't think, I agree that we should not allow for landscaping irrigation every single day.
During the heat of the day, obviously.
Yeah, during the heat of the day as well. So if you're saying that it has to be done before 10:00 AM or after 4:00 PM, that's, that's fine as well. But I would say that we start with four days a week and move down rather than try to move up if we get people complaining that they're watering their landscaping for more than two days, two days a week.
Joe, did, has the South Florida, has the district prescribed specifically the number of days they do or don't want to see, or do we have that flexibility?
I believe we don't have that flexibility. I think they're referring to chapter 40 E24 of the Florida Administrative Code that requires the two days. I can get that information for you and confirm that.
I have a new reading.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm also leading some of the examples for variances, if they use a soil moisture sensor. So that certain people could use it if they have a soil moisture sensor.
That's what it says, yes.
And what is the actual penalty? Because it refers to other ordinances.
I, I don't, don't have that information in this ordinance. The penalties are, I think they need to be developed through policy.
The current cross-reference is the penalties established for any other municipal ordinance violation, which is a maximum fine of $500 per day.
And this would have to go through a special magistrate hearing?
It could be done that way, or it could be prosecuted as a municipal ordinance violation through county court.
And, you know, how much, you know, cost to enforce this?
Mayor, I can't even recall the last time that we pursued a municipal ordinance violation through county court. Because the cost of doing that in most cases exceeds the value of the expected penalty that would be awarded by a court. When we were doing them quite a long time ago, we found that the courts were not, the judges were not really interested in assessing fines more than, say, in the nature of 25 or $50 per violation. So it was not an effective tool. So code enforcement could be a manner of doing that, but then, you know, you're dealing with continuing violations. So we could look a little bit more at the methodology for, for seeking penalties, but that's the current restraint under our, our, our current judicial system.
Yeah, no, I'm, I don't necessarily know how the other, the, the rest of the commission feels. But I'm not okay with just allowing two days to water landscape. And that I'd requested at four. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would be open to, to tabling, to, to look into that better. Because I'm inclined to agree with you, but I'd like to ask some more questions and no more. Because this means that any Because this means that any community that doesn't have reclaimed water could only irrigate twice. And does this also prohibit communities that use well water, such as Hunter's Run, from not irrigating the rest of the community that's not on the golf course? So I think, you know, this is a big request, and so I understand that South Florida Water Management District doesn't, may not award us grants because we haven't enacted this ordinance, but I'd like to get some more information first regarding, you know, a proper enforcement penalty, and as our attorney stated, it's not necessarily likely to receive positive or financial results going through a county court system. And so I think, you know, we would want to put this in the, through the special magistrate hearing, and, you know, give it some actual teeth so that people aren't irrigating between the hours of ten AM and four PM.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Hay?
I would, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I don't, I'm not sure that we will have the luxury of making that call of how many days. I think we're, if we can, fine, but I, I thought I heard that that's going to be governed by higher legislation. But I, I would agree, we need, we need a little more time before we make that decision. I would like to postpone it. We gather some more information.
So I have a motion to table by, I believe, Commissioner Katz. Do you want to second that, Commissioner Hay?
Yes. Second.
All those in favor, favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion will be tabled to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Joe, or Lori, is it possible to get a little bit more of a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Next, the future agenda item, I just want to recap of things added on. We have a discussion of current levels of police within the city limit, within the city of Boynton Beach, and the, the next steps. Commissioner Romulus would like to have a proclamation for the U.S. Conference of Mayors in regards to antisemitism, my request of having spreadsheet of major engineering projects, and, you know, I'm going to make it, you know, anything over five hundred thousand dollars as a major engineering project. If the, the commission agrees with that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that as well.
Mayor, I do have another one.
Yes, and then, yep, Commissioner Hayes requests regarding Heritage Park.
Right. In addition to that one, I have another one I want to add.
All right.
You want me to talk about it now?
Yes, please.
Okay. It, it's not, it's not one of the, the, the greatest subjects, but we do, do need, I would like to discuss about speed bumps. We, we even have, we even have different ones in our own city. But I have two, two addresses right here now in front of me where I'm getting constant calls about accidents happening, people, cars running into other people's houses, running into these people's houses, racing up and down the road. I know it's, it's not a, a, a one-size-all type of thing. I, I, I think we have to look at them on an individual basis, one-on-one. But there are other means, other than speed bumps, maybe. I, I think if we would just take a look at our, our city as a whole. I, I drove over to both of these addresses myself and just observed the traffic, and sure enough, they were they were just I, I think we need to, it's a subject that we don't like to talk about it, but I think we really need to have that discussion and see what we can come up with. So that's, that's where I'm I don't know if the city manager wants to chime in and
Yep. Commissioner Hay, can you give me those two addresses real quick? Because when we
Absolutely, absolutely. The first one, her name is Anita Byrd, B-Y-R-D. The address is twenty-six oh four Northeast Third Street.
Okay.
And the other one, his name is Robin Ricky Gardner, G-A-R-D-N-E-R, and he lives at twenty-two sixty-one Northeast First Lane.
Got it. Yes, and, and Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Hay and I had a brief discussion earlier today and about this, and it happens to be that, it's funny, because Gary sat down with Catherine and myself last week, and he's been working very hard on, and will be bringing forward, and it's under the future agenda item for an overall neighborhood traffic calming program. He's been doing some research on cities' best practices of developing a toolkit of addressing speeding issues and calming issues in neighborhoods, because there is no one-size-fits-all. So, you know, there are a variety of methods and tools that we can use to attack different problems or sources of problems. So Gary is just about ready. I think he said he'd like till May to present, because I asked him to present it to the commission, because I think you'd be thrilled to see it, from education campaigns to solar lighted, you know, speed detection signs, to speed humps and bumps, and in, you know, adjusting intersection tables and so forth. So we are in the works on that now, and you'll, I think, be very pleased with that. So we'll take a look at these two addresses now to see if there's something that could possibly be addressed quickly. But we look forward to, we have it for May of twenty, of May to present an overall citywide program for you.
Thank you, Lori, and, you know, I agree with Commissioner Hay that we want to have a Vision Zero City, and we've had deaths on our road the past year, you know, when those speed limits have been only twenty-five miles per hour. One of the things that, you know, hopefully we focus on, I know that when I go to Lake Worth Beach or West Palm Beach, they sometime narrow the roads in residential communities so that it is not a thoroughfare or a complete straight road.
Another tool in the toolbox is, toolbox would be a road diet, adjusting speed limits. I mean, there's a million, you know, there's a but we want to put them together and establish criteria and standards in how we make the decision as to what tool or what, what is the right remedy to potentially address the problem, and really every neighborhood has different characteristics, different issues. So Gary's done an excellent job of really pulling together what other cities have done, have done this and done it quite successfully. So we'll have something for you to see here in a few months.
All right. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item about exploring different or innovative economic development incentives. And so I, you know, South Florida is becoming the new hot place to be where companies are moving into, and and I'm hearing that more and more often. And I'd like to make sure that our city is, is on the map with that, that we are competitive and attractive to all these companies that are moving. And so if we could explore, and if staff could bring to us what other cities have in terms of incentive programs that are outside of the traditional CRA programs, I would love to have that conversation.
We'll just ask for a little bit of time on that, Vice Mayor, if we may, and I can do some of that research.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Vice Mayor, I don't know if you've ever been to the, the BDB?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and so they're, the, the organization with the, a little bit more funding than we have. So, you know, trying to bring the, the businesses here. It's all requiring location. And one of the things that, you know, I was thinking that we may want to do to help economic development is rethink the big-box retail stores that we have currently vacant in our city, to see if we can figure out whether light industrial might work within them versus retail. And I would say it on a conditional use with a lot of requirements, but, you know, we have a twenty thousand to thirty thousand square foot space with high ceilings. You know, you know, I, you know, I just look at Steinmark being vacant, and it's like, you know, they do have access to a bay to load and unload. What can we do to help encourage economic development to come back to our commercial locations?
I'm right there with you, Mayor, and we have to see this as also the flip side to their housing conversation. And so we need to help raise people's incomes, and one of them is to attract these higher-paying jobs. We need another NYU Langone, and so all of these ideas I'd love to explore.
So it's, yeah, if you, I guess it's kind of up to us now, if we hear something that another city has done or implemented to turn in or re, or to redo their land development regulations to allow for different uses in the, the commercial retail or general commercial, so that we can have a a more vibrant economy here in the city. So Lori, are you okay with all the things you got to do?
I'm on, I'm on the back of my blank pages on my agenda. We've got it.
Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Katz?
To, to end real quickly on a positive note, I just wanted to praise staff for their work since they took over the dog park maintenance in District One in the new Cortina area. I don't know if anyone's driven by there, but the, the conditions prior to the city taking over responsibilities were, were not good. And, you know, I, I live there, I go there, I drive by it a half dozen times a day, it feels like, and it is, it's shocking how quickly staff is, is landscaping and turning over the the runs as they start to get degraded. And if you drive by there at any point in the day, you know, literally a hundred or two hundred-plus residents frequent that park a day during the week, and on weekends even more, it's, it's extremely popular, and, and because of city staff taking the initiative to ensure that the, the property, the properties that contribute to funding that in the vicinity are actually now letting the city do it right. It's just a beautiful and well-maintained park, and as the last condos or last apartments come online in the Cortina area, it's just, you know, it, it looks amazing. You know, I say that as someone who lives next to it, and, and again, as, as the the district commissioner, I'm just very happy, and it couldn't have been done without staff taking the initiative to say they could do a better job. And a lot of times you hear that, you know, government doesn't do as good a job as the private sector, or government doesn't do a great job compared to private interests, but the city is doing justice by that park and the residents who frequent it. So I'm just very happy, and I wanted to make sure whether it's Parks and Recs or anybody else who's involved in that, they should be praised because it's, it's amazing. Thank you.
Mayor, that was an Andrew Mack idea. You've got to give him the credit for that one. And I just want to mention, I just signed a purchase order, so just a quick update while we're on Joe Crowder. The, the Wi-Fi project is moving forward. We just signed to get poles installed and so forth, so I'll have a, a little update for you on, on the timing of getting that installed here very shortly.
Wonderful. All right, seeing no further. Yuri, do you mind finding us with the closing?
Yes, Mayor Grant. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great night.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.